Recognition of dedication and service, Ken Melvin. Take it away, Ken.
Okay, the, uh, the, the board members and I have chosen to recognize Lori Darga for her exceptional service in the Veterans Department, and we will be presenting her a plaque at the regular meeting. She doesn't know about this, she's not in until 9:30, so we'll keep it a surprise, and that'll be coming up in the next meeting.
Okay, alright, anything, anything, anybody else have anything on that? Or, I guess, I guess we'll just wait till, you want this worked into the regular meeting, Ken, or?
Yes, please.
Okay, where would you like to put that?
Uh, new, new business?
You want it all the way down, we can do that, it's up to you.
Or do you want to have it at the start? I, I'm going through my agenda right here, I gotta, um...
Well, why don't we, why don't we, for the sake of, let's put it under public comment number five.
Okay, public comment number five, very good.
Alright, you know, so when I go to public comment, you, you jump right in there, okay?
Okay, very good. And Tom Shepard, Tom Shepard's gonna be there to do the presentation somehow. I think he's gonna log in from the Veterans Office.
Okay, everybody okay with that? Okay, good enough, we'll, and we'll work that into the, the agenda when we approve it at the regular meeting at 10 o'clock, and then we'll get done, get it done early, okay, Ken?
Very good, thank you, Bob.
Alright, item number two, revised L-4402 apportionment report, Jamie Howserman. Can you hear me, Jamie? Hear us, Jamie?
I can, thank you, good morning.
And we can hear you, thank you, good morning to you.
Okay, Honorable Commissioners of Ross Common County, I am Jamie Howserman, your Equalization Director. In front of you today is the revised L-4402 statement showing taxable valuations and mills apportioned by the County Board of Commissioners for 2020. MCL 211.37 orders in part that at the session held prior to October 31st, the County Board of Commissioners shall, by directing their Equalization Director to do so, ascertain and determine the amount of monies to be raised for the county purposes, and shall apportion that amount, and also the amount of state tax and indebtedness of the county to the state among our several townships. We shall also examine all certificates, statements, papers, and records that have been submitted to the county clerk and the Equalization Director, showing the monies to be raised in the several townships for school, highway, drain, township, and other purposes. The County Board of Commissioners shall direct the monies proposed to be raised for these legally authorized purposes to be spread upon the tax rolls of the proper townships. At this time, I certify that we have reviewed the newly associated certificates, statements, papers, and records submitted by the various townships, village, and taxing authorities. Those were examined, and the revised L-4402 represents a compilation of those documents, which now includes a full 18 mills for Raps School District, Ross Common Area Public School District, and the newly voted in one mill for police and public safety of Richfield Township. So this L-4402 is identical to the one that you saw in October, with the exception of the two things I just named. On the November 3rd election, the voters asked for and approved, authorized the collection of the 18 mills for the Ross Common School District, and the one additional mill for police and public safety for Richfield Township. Those are the two items that have been added. Does anybody have any questions for me on that? No?
No, and I, and then, with this time, Jamie, we've got that down as motion number one to pass that today, okay?
Yes, I understand that your board policy is generally to hear it, and at the following meeting then to decide on approving or adopting. However, because we already did this in October, and you've had over a month to look at it, and the only two changes are the ones that were approved by the voters on November 3rd, the timeliness would be appropriate for you to go ahead and do so today.
Right, you, this is actually your second presentation, just with two additions to the first one.
Correct.
Okay, alright, um, because of our board policy, of our board members, everybody in favor of putting it down for today? Okay?
Yes.
Alright, good.
Thank, thank you.
Alright, okay, Jody, or I mean, Jamie, don't go away, Jody, jump in, designated assessor.
Can I share my screen with you, please, Bob?
Yes.
Can you see that?
I can now, yep.
Perfect, okay, I'll go through the, um, the designated assessor process with the Commissioners, and then you'll have some choices to make on how you'd like to proceed. So, property assessing reform actually started in 2018, when it was evident to the State Tax Commission, Department of Treasury, that assessors across the state were not at the level of compliance that they feel necessary. Thus, the legislature took some action, and that process is becoming, um, more timely as, as we're, as we're approaching, um, some of the things that need to be implemented. One of the things that needs to be implemented is something that they now have deemed as designated assessor. It's new verbiage, um, this we've never had before, and so, in essence, designated assessor is a held by a person that's either a Level 3 or a Level 4, and it's done by county. So each of the counties in the state will have a designated assessor. Um, that assessor will be responsible for a unit in the event that there's a problem, and so I'll go through that process with you. This audit that revealed that the assessors, um, as a whole, were, were in compliant, um, is called Audit of Michigan, or I'm sorry, Audit of Minimum Assessing Requirements. What I can tell you about our Ross Common County assessors is we had incredibly high scores. We never had anyone with even close to what I would consider an actual issue. And the state gave us quite a bunch of kudos for that a handful of years back. However, that's not true of all counties in Michigan, and because of that, they have looked at and implemented this designated assessor process. So, the first phase of this, like I said, is that audit of minimum assessing requirements. That gets conducted every five years. The new audit has two sections, there's a section of technical items that are required by staff, and then there's also an assessment role analysis. Any item that is not in compliance is, any item that is, they know on their report is considered not in compliance. So here's what happens, an audit is conducted at each of the local township levels. When that audit is conducted, one of two things occurs. Either the local unit is compliant and is labeled as such, or they're non-compliant and they're labeled that way. Um, as I said a few minutes ago, in Ross Common County, when we had this audit, all of our townships were found in compliance. However, if a local unit is non-compliant, then that local unit does have to submit a corrective action plan to the Department of Treasury State Tax Commission, or they can choose to challenge the results of the audit. At that point, a follow-up audit is conducted. That process happens about a year after the initial audit. Once that follow-up is conducted, one of two things can occur. Either they pass the audit, and it ends the process for them, and then they don't have another audit for another five years, or they fail that follow-up, and when they do, there are three potential options. The township is then forced to either hire a designated assessor, or they can choose to hire a different assessor of their choice, but they can no longer retain the assessor that they have. Here's a screenshot of that. So, your local unit hires a new assessor, that assessor has to be a Level 3 or a Level 4. All of the townships within our county only require a Level 2 assessor currently. So they would end up having to, or being forced to, hire an assessor of a higher degree. The second potential thing that occurs is the State Tax Commission assumes the jurisdiction of the assessment records for that township. The State Tax Commission then uses contractors to make the correction. Or the local unit can hire someone to make the correction if they so chose, if they could work that out with the State Tax Commission. The third thing is the local unit moves to the designated assessor position. That designated assessor then remains as the reassessor for a five-year period. So, let's see, next we've got... So when the local unit submits their corrective action plan, there's a form for, for the audit, and/or you can challenge that. Um, most of the time, the unit understands that they're not in compliance, and they, they, um, don't challenge that, I guess I've only seen that a couple of times where it's been challenged. Generally speaking, they understand what they were not in compliance with, and then they submit an action plan, and they, and they in essence say, "Dear Department of Treasury State Tax Commission, we understand that we're not in compliance with", um, maybe it was land value analysis, and so therefore, "we're going to take action to get our assessors some additional training, et cetera, so that they can do a better job next time." Once, once that unit then passes that, then they're done. So they get a second chance at it, and this happens over years. So, if they fail an audit the first time, that's year number one. Year number two, they get the follow-up, they get to tell them what they, what they wanted to do and do a better job at it. And then year number three, if they didn't do that, is when, um, the process would move to the designated assessor spot. Um, and/or they could hire someone else of their choice. That I've gotta tell you, I don't imagine ever seeing happen in Ross Common County. Um, like I said, our township officials are, um, very diligent and thoughtful, not as in like caring, but, but as in like thought, their thought process is appropriate for ensuring that they've got, um, high-quality assessors that are doing a good job, and that continue to do a good job all the time. However, we can't opt out of this process, and so you, as a county board, is tasked with naming a designated assessor, and then working with the local units to have the local units agree on your named designated assessor. And once that process is complete, then you would submit that to the Department of Treasury. They would do a final vetting on whether that person was or was not qualified to do that, to do that role for them. So, this looks like a lot of different ways, and a lot of different things to a lot of different counties. So, um, some counties are asking that their Equalization Director assume that level of responsibility on behalf of the county. In that thought process, if a county, if a township were to fall into the designated assessor situation, the county then would need to, um, hire and retain assessors to assist with that. So, my staff currently does not have any flexibility for doing that. So that would require you then hiring an employee or employees, depending on the township or the quantity of townships that we ended up becoming the designated assessor for. Those employees would all have to be of an adequate skill set. And those people are hard to find, so that you have an understanding of that. Um, so we'd have a difficulty in hiring, I believe. However, that would be our, our requirement if we did so. Another option would be to name someone as a designated assessor that we already have a relationship with. So the first thought that came to mind when this started to roll out last spring, it really became quite a discussion, I sent out an email to all of our assessors asking if anyone was interested in the position. And the reason why I sent it to all of our assessors is because I do believe that all of them would be qualified and capable of assuming that role. There was interest from Diane Randall at Ross Common Township to fill that role for us. At that point, we started working with her, about three, almost four months later, um, she decided that she was no longer interested in filling that position for our county. So last, within the last 30 days, we have then been back to the drawing board on, on what this is going to look like. I personally don't think that our county equalization department is appropriately staffed and/or in a position where we would want to, or maybe even you would want us to, assume the work of a local unit. Um, my, my, um, tenure at, um, Ross Common County as your Equalization Director would lead me to believe that our, our philosophy and our thought process is very much so to let the local units, um, manage their own processes. So our third option then would be to hire an outside company, and I can tell you that most, most of these counties are going with some type of a company to do their designated assessor work. And the reason why they're doing that is because these companies are well-established, have substantial staff, um, they've got all the right protocols in place in order to flex up or down their workload as needed. So with that thought process in mind, I reached out to a handful of companies in the state and asked if they were interested in this position. Of those, there is some interest potentially for someone that wanted, a company that wanted to take over Ross Common County and do so at an annual retainer fee. So this, this whole thought process of an annual retainer fee has been, um, well discussed at the state and county, um, levels in meetings over the last year. And what I can say is, most counties will end up paying a retainer fee to simply name someone. Now, that person has no obligation to do any work unless a unit failed their AMAR, failed the follow-up of the AMAR, and then were required to go under the jurisdiction of the designated assessor. So in the meantime, they're collecting a fee for essentially little to no work. That doesn't sit well with me, I don't know about you guys or what you think about that, but that didn't really sit well with me. I guess I can appreciate to some extent that they are extending themselves. So if you look at it a little bit like an attorney that's on a retainer, they are extending themselves for the potential of doing work, therefore, um, a portion of their time is taken up, I can almost appreciate that to some. However, I don't think that just naming someone that's a Level 4 would impact them very greatly. So, with that thought process in mind, I wanted, or was hoping that we could go the route of not having a retainer fee on an annual basis for this position. And so Diane Randall had initially agreed to do that at no retainer fee. And, once that no longer was an option, then we went to the process of, would I be willing to take on that role? Well, I absolutely would, I can tell you that I love our county, I would do anything that you guys needed me to do. Um, I would do that as another duty is assigned, no extra cost. However, it then becomes slightly more problematic in that thought process that maybe we don't want to step into the role of township government work, and we wanted to remain at a different position, you know? And so then it became kind of evident that maybe what you really would want is my company, my, mine and my husband's company, to assume that process on behalf of Ross Common County. And so we thought about that, and like I said, most of these companies are charging retainer fee. Um, I don't feel that that's appropriate, so potentially, we could work it out where our company could be the designated assessor for Ross Common County, and I wouldn't, like I said, we would do that at no retainer fee, so that's an option. So, in my discussions with, um, your Controller/Administrator, it seems to me that we really kind of have three options, and we have very little time to, to, um, take care of those options. We've gotta make a plan, we've gotta move forward, so we're looking for some level of guidance today. I don't think it needs to be in a motion, I just think that it needs to be where, where we can come to some level of agreement about what we may or may not want as a Board of Commissioners, um, so that Jody and I can move forward with however we're going to go about this. The, the next potential option, I said there were three, I've only talked about two. The third potential option remains as part of this new legislation that in the event a county does not make a selection for a designated assessor, a designated assessor will be, um, named by the State Department of Treasury on your behalf. And I can tell you from, um, multiple discussions I've had now with the, um, State Tax Commission, that that is going to definitely be at a retainer fee, probably a significant one. Um, and the other part of that discussion is, um, the state is likely going to name one of their five current state contractors. I can tell you that, um, uh, my husband and I's assessing company is one of those five state-name contractors. So it's likely, based on location, that if you chose not to do anything, or you just wanted to wait, that potentially we would become your designated assessor anyway, highly potentially. However, it would be, like I said, at a cost, because the state's going to assess a cost for them. So, those to me are your three options at this late hour, and I'll tell you that, um, counties across the state right now, um, probably 30 to 35% are in the exact same spot you're in, so we're, yes, late in this process, but we're not all that late in the process, we do have time. Um, if in fact, we wanted to go with one of those three actions, we could absolutely still have time to get that all implemented. Um, so, I can tell you that, um, from counties across the state, that anybody who found a local assessor that was interested and qualified, um, has had no struggles and everything went through smoothly. That was our plan in June, and that didn't work out. So, then I can also tell you that counties that wanted to, um, take over that role of, of, um, local governance at the county level, um, for assessment administration, those counties have had no struggle either, because they've simply named their Equalization Director and made guarantees and assurances to their equalization budgets, et cetera, that they would take care of hiring the necessary staff as needed. Um, so, and then the counties that had, um, that are kind of in our spot, if you will, that don't really have a good viable option, um, we're kind of here in this, this spot of, do we hire a company locally that we know? Or do we hire a company locally that we don't know at a fee? Or do we, um, wait and allow the state to assign someone? So, that is my presentation, Jody, is there anything you wanted to add to that?
There is. Jamie and I have kind of beat this up in several different aspects and looked at it several different ways. Um, I have talked to our chairperson several times about this. And what I will tell the Board of Commissioners is, in ranking, from my view as Administrator/Controller, in ranking the three choices, um, my last choice would be that we utilize our Equalization Department to take over, for several reasons. We are looking at, um, by May of next year, having only a two-person Equalization Department after retirement. Um, so Jamie is absolutely right, if you ended up with a township with, um, any size parcels, you would be hiring a minimum of one full-time person. So you're taking on, um, taking on that role. Having lived through this process in a different format 12 years ago at a township, um, it, it is a, they give you X amount of time to have all these things reassessed essentially. And that is not something that I would necessarily want to task our Equalization Department with. Additionally, then we put ourselves in that process of pay for additional duties and having some sort of additional compensation, um, for the department in and of itself. So that's my last choice. My second choice at this time would be to do an actual contract out for services with the Howsermans Company. Um, it's a good solution. My only thought process with that was, in talking to a couple townships, um, they found either, they wanted all of the fees specifically, I don't wanna say specifically laid out, but they wanted to, to kind of have a say in how those fees are developed, which unfortunately, the state's very clear in their format of that, um, or see us put this out as a request for bid. Now, we know that there's only five people, contractors, in the state of Michigan. I'm well enough aware of a couple of them to know that they wouldn't be people we'd accept. Um, but this would be my second choice. I don't love the fact, on either two or three, that we're kind of making a big brother decision for the townships. Um, and I have a gut feeling that we will get some, some pushback from most of our townships as well. My first choice is honestly to allow the state to, to serve as the people that assign a designated assessor to the townships themselves. That way, the only thing that we end up doing is being a flow-through when the state sends a bill to the town, they'll send a bill to us essentially, and the townships will pay, pay to us. And I can be honest with you, we have some of the smaller townships that if it comes down to them failing and having to redo this, odds are we will be working with them to submit the payment in full to the state and letting us, letting them pay us back over the course of a year or two as well, because it can be quite costly to them. Um, but those are my thoughts. I would like to see if we could put it on either for discussion in, um, discussion for the work session at the next meeting, and then potentially a motion, or if you could make a decision, consensus today for a motion at the next meeting, so we could get this over with and buried. for a motion at the next meeting, so we could get this over with and buried. So.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions about this process?
I've done a little research on it and I actually got some information through the state tax commission, but I'm going to read what I've got here. Under PA six sixty, the county must enter into an interlocal agreement with all townships and cities within their county to designate the individual who will serve as the county's designated assessor. The majority of the assessing districts in a county along with the county board must approve the agreement submitted to the state tax commission and restate, receive state tax mission confirmation that the designated assessor and agreement will be accepted by December thirty first of two thousand and twenty. So I'm reading that we can designate the assessor and have it done by the thirty first of this month. And then go to the townships and have it okayed after that. Am I correct in assuming that?
I would say no.
No, okay.
I would say we need, we would need to make a, a decision here fairly quickly in the late November, very early December, if that was the direction that we were going to go. And then we would need to get that information to our local units and allow them to get that in front of their township boards for their December board meetings. If that was the direction that we want to go. And then a majority, so we've got eleven, so we would need six majority. Those, then we would submit that to the state tax commission by December thirty first. At a meeting I was on recently with the executive director of the tax commission, it was asked, what if we're in the process and we just don't have it done yet? Kind of like what, what commissioner, our chairperson Snyder is explaining. And he said at that point, submit what you have and they would make a decision, but that he was not willing to let us know that he wasn't willing to speak on behalf of the commissioners, the tax commissioners about what they would do. However, I would assume that if we were in process and relatively close, that they would allow that to, to continue. That would be my assumption.
Talk to a little further. Mark.
You know, Mr. Chairman, the way I look at it, and I don't say this lightly, we have probably the finest equalization director and probably the finest controller administrator in state of Michigan. The way I look at it, I would be, I would just like to see what they come up with and then I would be more than happy. At the end of the day, we make that final decision, but I may have earned my trust and confidence for us to make the right decision. So Jody, in my opinion, we can talk about this for hours, but if you and, if you and Jamie can draft up a motion and we could look at it today before we leave, I'm sure that we would be happy to support that at the next meeting. Again, we have the finest, we got the finest people. So let's, let's, let's not necessarily give them the range to make the final decision, but let them draft up a motion so we can vote on it. I feel very, very confident in, in their abilities, Mr. Chair.
Well, Mike, my, I have, I have no problem with what you're talking about, Mark, is, but I don't know if we can have it ready by the ninth of December. We do have another meeting on the eighteenth of December. So we have two meetings to do, to, to do with this, but I'd like to, my recommendation is, is that we pursue the controller's recommendation of which way to go, put it on for the next worst section at the ninth and have the motion actually presented to us that so we can then talk about it and pass it on the eighteenth.
Sounds good to me, Mr. Chair. Whatever direction you want to do, I just want to make sure that we emphasize Jody and Jamie put it together for us.
Okay, that's, I, I'm okay with that.
Hey Dave.
Yes. I have a question though. Isn't that going to be too late for the township levels? I think.
That's the next question. How are we going to get to six townships?
I, I can.
No, but what, what I'm saying is by the eighteenth, all the townships basically have their meetings in. I think this should be approved prior to first of December, so Jamie could get this out to all the local governments.
See, the thing is, Mr. Chair, and sorry, sorry, sorry Dave, good to see you. I would like to see it drafted up today in between the meetings. Put it out there for the public to see and then just make a motion on it for the next meeting. I don't want to wait. I would rather just get it done early. I don't think we're meeting all the requirements. I have no doubt that Jamie and Jody could have this thing typed up for a review. We could put it on the work, or the, the meeting today to be able to talk about public, you know, for the, for our regular, regular meeting. And then we could present it in, in a motion form to be voted on in two weeks. I, I agree with Dave. I like to get the thing done. I don't want to think, I don't want to languish.
I have no problem putting it on for the ninth, if you guys want to move this thing up.
Yes, sir.
My, the next thing is, is that you're putting this work on to Jody and Jamie to get this thing done today. Is that possible or not?
We, we are prepared to do that, Bob. We, we are very much so on the fence about, I guess this is where I'm at with it. I, I do not believe that we will ever see this implemented in our county. I really just do not believe that it will be implemented. And I say that because of the, their scores last time on their audit and our ability, myself included, to work, work together to ensure that we are all on the same page, doing the right thing, following the laws. Here in my office, part of the equalization process involves a substantial amount of auditing. It's different items that the state looks at than what I look at. However, what I will say is that I believe that we've got real good quality assessing departments in our county. So I don't see it being implemented. However, if it does get implemented, it's expensive. And it's expensive across the state. And so what Jody had kind of touched on is the, the discussion about, you know, how expensive is it to these local units? Well, you're looking at like twenty-five percent more than they're paying now in the, in the event that they have to be taken over. But keep that thought process in mind that they would have been in really bad shape when that happened. And so therefore it takes way more work to fix a problem and then move forward than it does just to move in and, and take over for something that's running smoothly. So there's that whole thought process out there of, oh, well, Jamie's going to make a lot of money doing this, that I don't want to be out there in the public thought process. That is not at all what I want to do. In fact, like I said, I have in the past and I would continue to work diligently to help these townships to ensure that they don't ever get to the spot. But I can see that as a headline in the newspaper about how this contract language is so expensive. It is. It is expensive. But that's what happens when you've got to bring in the big guns, I guess, for lack of better words. So I don't know. I, I don't know what the right thing to do is. What I can tell you, I don't want to have happen is for us to drag our feet and not put something out there only to turn around and have the state then charge them an annual fee. I think then that would make them grumpy as all get out where I guess if we went forward with the thought process of my company doing it, then they wouldn't have an annual fee. So I don't know, six of one happened, one of the other. Like I said, I just don't want, I don't want the public thought process that I'm in any way looking to make money off of this. I'm not. If that makes any sense.
So Jamie, I'm going to jump in real quick and I'm just going to clarify. Jamie and I actually, more Jamie than me, I've read it and approved it, but we actually do already have a contract drafted for Ross Common County interlocal agreement for county designated assessor. So essentially, we can provide that with you today via email and in person to take home and review before the next meeting. It goes over the variations of things, the number of, you know, properties, et cetera, and estimated cost for properties based on what the state is. This contract is pretty specific for what the state has said that we are allowed to charge as far as we being the person that we contract with for the county. So we can provide that with you, no problem, to take home or to look at, at home. And if you'd like to provide feedback to us in the next two weeks on it or questions or concerns, we could do that. And, and then we could always put this under newer unfinished business if the chairman so decides to review or change any motion that may be on or would be on to approve this designated assessor contract. So.
For, for the ninth you're talking about?
Yes, sir. And I can go ahead and email this out today to all of our local townships and let them know this is where we're going. And if they would so like to comment, please reach out to their commissioner as soon as possible.
Okay. So then for the day, even though we've discussed it at the work session, why don't we also add it as a, on your unfinished or new business, just to touch on it so it's there. So in two weeks we can act on that on the ninth. Does that sound good to you, Mr. Mel, or Mr. Melbourne?
I had no doubt that Jody Valentino and Jamie, Jamie had a recommendation for us. I had no doubt. And I'm, I think that's the wonderful idea, Mr. Chair. I think we put it on the, we, we meet the spirit and intent and of what we're trying to accomplish. And it also is a timeliness issue. So I am prepared to move forward at your leasures, Mr. Chair.
All right. And then.
Chairman Snyder, I have a question. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Melvin, you can go first.
Yes, a couple of questions. Do the townships, do the majority of the townships have to pass this and agree to it?
Yes.
Well, the Garrish Township meeting will be before the ninth.
Correct. And so my next thought process is, would you potentially like to give us your verbal opinion on? We could do a Zoom meeting, kind of like we're doing right now. I mean, invite the townships. Jody and I and maybe one, one or two of you could, could do something like that and we could do that early next week. We could send out an invitation today for anybody that could get on the Zoom meeting and we could discuss it. If that's something that you're interested in doing, several counties are doing that to get a feel for, and you're kind of in a precarious position and I'm not going to skirt around it. This, this legislation has put you in a pretty bad spot. You, you're not held on the line for anything financially at all. Yet your vote is, is, is the majority of the townships and the county commissioners. So you have almost a half vote, if you want to look at it like that. So in that, and it's all or nothing, you know, I mean either a yes or a no. So, so with that thought process, maybe the best thing to do to act as their voice would be for us to do some type of a group meeting with the local units. Explain the process for those that weren't already privy to that. Their assessors are, are all very privy to it. So I'm probably sure that they've heard about it before. However, this would at least let us have a pulse for, for where, where they're at on this. I don't know. That's just my.
You know what, Jody?
Second, second question, second question is, can you change the designated assessor at any time or are you committed to a, a long term? You can't, you can't change it once you make this.
Correct. Once, once you make this designation, that person is the designated assessor until a handful of events occur. My death is one of them. My cease of employment at Ross Common County could be another one. My, my lack of licensure. So in the event that I quit becoming, you know, quit as an assessor, I'm no longer an assessor would be, would be an option. That's pretty much it. So with that thought process, it's a very, it's a long-term thinking. However, again, I just don't see, and maybe I'm, maybe I'm wrong, but our assessors that have been in our county forever and they do a great job. I just don't see it ever truly actually being implemented. But that's my thought on it.
Well, to answer Ken's second question, I've got a copy here of an interlocal agreement for Ross Common County to approve the designated assessor for the period of January first through December thirty first. So I'm assuming it could be a one year or a two-year, but I would suggest we do a one year and then after that we just put it on again next year and take another look at it.
The, the state won't allow for that, Bob. It has to be a, a minimum of five years and it has to have caveats in it like I've explained.
And I stand corrected, be January first of twenty twenty, of twenty twenty-one till twenty twenty-six, December thirty first of twenty twenty-six. That's, I'm okay with it. I just saying there is, there is a period.
Yes.
Now, the other, the other question is, is, is that I like the idea of this Zoom meeting next week and inviting all the townships. That way, when I look at my district, I've got Bacchus Township on the seventh. I've got a Sobel Township on the twelfth and I've got Ridgefield on the sixteenth. So maybe to pass this, we need to move it to the eighteenth, which maybe it'll give us all, because you'll have the Zoom meeting and then you can all follow up on your respective townships after that and get them to pass it. Yes, sir. If you do, if you do it at the ninth, I got two townships that they wanted to meet until the twelfth and the sixteenth. I don't know about the rest of you.
Might, might all meet in the first week, all three of my townships, Mr. Chair, but we got a couple, three options here. I've just been scribbling them up. Well, we could draft up a quick letter to the townships explaining what we want to do. That could go on the next couple of days. That way the townships would have an idea. Then we could do the Zoom meeting on the ninth. And then at the chairman's leisure, we could have a special motion the next day or so to pass the motion. I, I don't like the idea of waiting to the very end because I, I think it puts us in a, in a bind. But I do think if we put a letter to the townships explaining what we're trying to do, followed up with a quick letter to the resorter for, for public transparency, we meet the via Zoom on the ninth and then a special meeting the next day. We have a couple of options, Chair.
I would like to jump in. I apologize for standing. But that would be too late, like for Ross Common Township and Lake. I would suggest Jody mentioned and Jamie that they would send an email out. Why couldn't we meet on the thirtieth on a Zoom meeting with all the township levels?
Early.
And this way
Oh, that too.
All the townships can vote on it at the regular meetings in December.
Correct. And that way you wouldn't have to make a motion on their behalf. In essence, there, and there's no right or wrong to this. You could either go first or you could go last. This would allow you then to go last and you would then be honoring their wishes, being that they're.
Exactly. And this way, all, all the townships, they wouldn't have to have special meetings. They do this at the regular board meetings.
Right.
Again, that's a great suggestion. I just want to get done earlier. I, I, what I don't want to do, Mr. Chair, is wait till the end, the end of the month.
Well, we may not have a choice, Mark, because you've got to get at least six of these townships on board. So I, I agree with Dave to have it, to have the Zoom. I would say on, I would say on the first of December, unfortunately, I'd like to attend and I can't attend on the thirtieth, but I can on the first.
Sounds good to me. First is.
The first would be sufficient because the first meeting I know was at Ross Common Township and that's the evening of the first.
Okay, so we could do that and then so then they know about it. So then Bacchus can, can look at, can look at passing this for their township on the seventh. But let's see, I don't know if the ninth is going to work. It's, I think it's got to be the eighteenth because you need to have these townships on board.
Well, that would be sufficient at that point, Bob, because all the townships will be jumped in.
All the townships will have their meetings before the eighteenth. That's why I suggested the eighteenth.
But we should have a meeting on the first then with the townships.
We should have a Zoom meeting with the townships and they should have a letter explaining this to them from equalization and the county.
And I think that letter is very important, Mr. Chair, to the eleven townships and also to the paper. That way everybody understands what's going on, so it's not a surprise.
Right. And let, let them vet it at their meetings, Mark, because if you, if you have it on the ninth, we can't have it ready by the ninth because I got two townships that don't meet until the twelfth and the sixteenth. And if I'm not mistaken, Dave, you got one. I don't know about Marky, but I think Lyon doesn't meet until the sixteenth also, right?
The, yeah. So that's come I say, we're, we're hitting a hundred percent of the townships if we meet on the first.
Right.
All the townships will be covered.
Right. So if you're a commissioner that has three, three, three townships, you need to get to all three of their meetings in December. And the Zoom meeting and the letter will be out there ahead of us, so they'll know about it. They should be able to put it on for a motion that day. But you need to get your townships ahead of time. Anybody else got any other thoughts, Ken?
Well, I don't know. Just for Jody and Jamie, just, just a silly thought.
You're dying out, Kenny.
Don't think will ever happen. But as, if Jamie's so sure that this would never happen, I don't know. But then, then you've got, that has to be something permanent for five years. What if we hired a private contractor, not Jamie, somebody else, and they just quit and go out of business? There's got to be some process where you can change the designated assessor. I just don't see where you would just leave this blank. Or I think Jody, as I understood it, said that if you don't appoint a designated assessor, then the state will just come in and do it anyway. I don't know. I'm, I'm getting a little confused here. I mean, what's the, what's the difference of just appointing Jamie as our assessor and have her do it? And, and then when we get to the point where she couldn't do it, make a change?
You're saying through the county as your county equalization department? We could potentially do.
I thought you said that was option, somebody said option number three would be the least desirable, and that would be to have Jamie do it.
Yeah, through, through the county as the county equalization director.
Correct.
But, but you don't have the time. It don't ever happen anyway.
Correct.
I want to defer to Jody here. What's the recommenda, what's the recommendation you were making, Jody? Which one?
My first recommendation was to allow the state to take over that process for us of appointing a designated assessor to the township, should that occur. My second choice would be to go with the contract.
Okay, the first choice, is there a cost associated with that?
To the county? No.
Okay, so if, if it would happen, it would be that townships would pay, right?
Yes. The downside of that is the state will charge more than a contract. That's just the way it always is.
Okay, so then the second option, if we were to hire the Hauserman Company, there would be no cost unless somebody did the same thing, any township needed to do it, but the cost would be less to the townships, correct?
Yes, sir. That would be correct. It's a manageable cost, as far as they could budget for it and know exactly what to expect.
Okay. So that needs to be explained to these townships on the first, on that Zoom meeting, and maybe we can get the feedback on that and looking at going those two different options, right? And then we'll know it for the discussion on, well, we'll know a little bit by the, the meeting of the ninth. We'll need to put it back on the work session again. But I, I, I agree with David, whichever way we go on those two options, it needs to go on for the 18th, because every township's meeting, every commissioner can get to their two township's meetings to make sure they're on board. And I think the goal is to have 100%.
Correct. So to answer your question, Commissioner Melvin, I've pulled up the law, and I'll read to you the four things that it says, or three, I'm sorry. The State Tax Commission may revoke the designated assessor and provide for an interim designated assessor if, one, the designated assessor dies or becomes incapacitated, two, the designated assessor's employment status materially changes. So that was the two things that I'd already said about me no longer being a Roscommon County employee, or three, the designated assessor is not capable of ensuring that the assessing district is able to achieve and maintain substantial compliance. So in essence, number three says, if I'm no longer good at my job, so if I die, if I don't, if I'm no longer the county equalization director, or if I'm not good at my job at some point, then those are the three reasons that you would be allowed to make that change within that five-year period.
Okay, Ken, does that answer your question?
Kind of, yes.
Okay, Tim, you want to weigh in on this?
Yeah, Denton Township's meeting is going to be next Wednesday night. I agree with the December 1st meeting. Everybody can Zoom in. If they send out an email to everybody today, explain what this Zoom meeting is going to be about. I have no problem. Like I said, I plan on attending to, because they do, there's a, not Zoom, but by phone. So, and I'll probably stop there on the way back today and notify them that, you know, this is coming down the pipe, so be aware of it. Be ready to make a decision on their meeting night.
Well, I would, I, I think the Zoom meeting is tremendous, because that gets it out there on the first. And talk about, I'm going to talk about Richfield, who has a complete new board. I'll stop there also, but it gets out on the first. They have a work session, I believe, on the ninth, Wednesday the ninth, so they can hash it around there. And I'll be at that. And then I could also, and they could put it on promotion and pass it on the 16th. And then we've got, we don't need 100%, but it should like to have 100% of the townships on board. And then we could pass it on the 18th, and we fulfill everything. So the ninth isn't going to work to, to pass this thing, but the 18th does.
Correct. And that also gives the townships then the option of going with what Controller Administrator Valentino said, which was, i- if they don't want to pass this, and, and we want to let the state choose, at least then they're part of that decision-making process to allow that to occur too.
Right. So let's, let's have that Zoom meeting on the first and go from there.
Chairman Snyder, can I just clarify? Do you want this posted as, is this a Board of Commissioners special meeting? Or is this going to be a meeting that Jamie and I host on behalf of the county? And if you guys are available, you may listen.
That's why I prefer, Jody, be you and Jamie make the presentation of the designated assessor. You know, as far as I'm concerned, all of us can attend, but I'm not planning on saying anything, because I want to listen.
I just wanted, yeah, I just wanted to verify for our Clerk ROD's office to, you know, if there needed to be official minutes taken, or what you would, what you would like to see from that.
Yep, I'd like to see it, I'd like to see it done jointly with Equalization and the Controller's Office to put this presentation out there, explain it to them, because you've got some new township officials, and then they can go from there.
And, and Mr. Chair, I appreciate your comment in regard to listening. The bottom line is Jamie, Jody can put it together. We, we listen, but we don't necessarily input, because the bottom line is really their decision trying to give us input. I, I feel strongly that, that I doubt very much that any, any, any of the townships, after hearing the presentation, will, will object. I think that Jamie and Jody will put together such a well, well-done presentation that they will all tacitly agree. Just my thoughts.
Okay. But I do think every township needs to have the opportunity.
Sure.
I don't think we can pass it on the ninth. I think we need to look at putting, putting whatever option the townships give us feedback on, and it needs to go on for the 18th. Final motion. We can discuss it some more, but I think it'd be great, this is where Zoom is going to be great for us to put this out there for Jody and Jamie, okay?
I'd agree.
Sounds like a plan.
Chair, and I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I'm fine with that also.
Okay.
Sounds like a plan.
Ken?
Yes, I'm good. Just to make sure, Jody, that you send out some notification.
I got a feeling it's going to go out today.
Okay. And I would encourage all commissioners to get to all of their township as quickly as you can, okay? All right, is that enough on that?
It is. Thank you.
Okay. Everybody's clear. Okay, item four, proposed 2021 meeting schedule. We talked about it last meeting. I think everybody's got copies of it. I've looked at it. Everything looks good. So I just, at this point, I think it, unless somebody's got a problem with it, I think it'll stand until we pass this on January 4th. And as far as committee appointments, we also went through those. We've got some vacancies that need to be addressed on individuals. I know there was a couple on EDC. Unfortunately, EDC did not meet last week. It's being postponed until December 10th. So, so four and five, anybody have anything they want to discuss in regards to that? Pretty straightforward.
Chairman, oh, sorry. I just wanted to verify, Chairman, that the Housing Department all are seeking reappointments. Laura has reached out to them. You've got a lot of seniority on that board, and they are all excited to stay in position and continue to work with, with Laura and Housing.
Okay, good. So.
Max.
When I look at, when I'm looking at this airport committee has, they're still working on filling one position there, correct? Somebody from Markey. The Brownfield redevelopment has got some vacancies, although we just did two. I think we've only got one now. And EDC's got a couple of them, but won't be able to address those till the 10th. Planning Commission's got one, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then Veterans, Tom Shepherd and Don Marks, Ken are both looking, are both for reappointment, right?
Yes. Jamie, can you clear the, clear the screen?
She's still out there. Yep, she's out there. She's on mute.
I don't know if that did it or not. Is it off there now?
Yep, you got it.
Awesome. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Okay, Veterans, you said Ken was okay?
Yes.
Okay. The Wage and Salary Committee, have we got that one filled, other than Noel?
So what I need to actually do, and we traditionally haven't, we didn't fill this one last year until the beginning of January, since they don't actually expire until December 31st.
Okay.
However, and I will have to use them, I'll get to that in my report later. However, I will, as long as you're okay with it, email the departments and see if they had replacements that they would like to put in. And if they have names to put forward, we will bring them at the next meeting for you. If not, we can see if everybody else is still interested.
Okay. All right. And as far as the, the Board of Commissioners Committee list, we had discussed it last time, and everything stays the same. So I'm anticipating we'll just re, retype that up, have Alicia take a look at the time, meeting times and other information, make sure that's all up. They didn't have that ready to go on January 4th also at 10 o'clock for the work session. Am I correct? Okay. Anything else from anybody as far as the work session's concerned? All right. I'm looking at meeting back here at 10 after 10, okay?
I'll see you.
Everybody's on.
Okay.
Tim, are you on board?
Yes, I am.
I'm here. Mr. Melbourne?
Yes, sir.
Where you at? There you are. Okay. Ken's there. And David, are you there? Okay, there's Dave. Michelle, are you there?
Yes.
Thank you. And Jody's there, right? Yep. Okay. We'll call the meeting to order. Roscommon County Board of Commissioners, regular meeting, November 25th, 2020, 10 o'clock AM or 10:10 via Zoom. Mr. Melbourne, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the public which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Item three, roll call of board members, please, Michelle.
Cristo.
Yes.
Melvin.
Here.
Snyder.
Here.
Melbourne.
You're here.
Buckenthaler.
Here.
All right, thank you. Item number four, I'm looking for an approval of the agenda with one addition being under unfinished or new business being a designated assessor agreement. I just wanted it into the record. We can have some more discussion if you'd like, but I think we did a pretty good job of it in the work session, but I would like to have it on for public record.
Go move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
More mention.
Okay, motion's made by Mr. Melbourne, seconded by Mr. Russo to pass the agenda with one change involving unfinished or new business being a designated assessor agreement. Any further discussion from any commissioner at this point? Hearing non-roll call.
Melvin.
Yes.
Buckenthaler.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Cristo.
Yes.
Melbourne.
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Okay, under public comment, I'd like, at this point, would like to go to Mike Beatty, our emergency manager. He's got some information that I think would be all need to be updated on. Mike, are you out there, sir?
I'm here. Good morning. Can you hear me?
Everybody here, Mike?
Morning, Mike.
Yes.
All right. Well, so first I just wanted, I was giving an update on the latest numbers for COVID. As of last night, we have 457 confirmed cases total, with nine deaths in the county. And on a meeting with the State DOC yesterday, there was some good news about the vaccine. They're expecting to have it in Michigan in three to four weeks. They figured the, midway through December, maybe the third week, they're getting 300,000 doses of the Pfizer vaccine and 223,000 of the Moderna vaccine. And that's going to be for the first wave. And the first wave, what they're calling Phase 1A, is going to be distributed to hospital personnel or working with, with patients. So not their workers or administrative staff. We're trying to get this right in the hands of the people on the front line. Also in that wave is our EMS personnel and healthcare, I'm sorry, long-term care facilities, staff and residents. And the second wave, which at this point, we have to see when more comes in, but when the next wave comes in, that's going to be for other first responders, law enforcement, fire corrections.
So now just regular residents are going to get it for like a long time?
Well, yeah, I mean, that's not my, that's not what I'm saying. Don't know yet. As, as more, as more doses come in, that's when they're going to move down the line. But their first priorities are going, going to be hospital EMS and long-term care facilities. They're still working on getting the locations where these will occur. Right now, I'm working with all our EMS departments to get their current numbers of personnel. And then that way the Health Department will know how many we're going to need in our county for them. But as far as where they're going to be vaccinated, that's undetermined at this time. It may be at the hospital. If there's enough demand in an area, they might have it locally. By being that this is a vaccine that has to be frozen at 90 degrees below zero, you have to have it in a place you can dispense it quickly in large, large amounts. So early on, it's probably going to be in bigger areas of hospitals.
Okay. Anything else, Mike, or?
If anybody has any questions further on that, more information will be coming in on future phases as more vaccine comes in.
Okay, so that's good news that Mike's got. I think he's shared everything he knows. Anybody else have anything you'd like to ask him? He probably might be, might or might not be able to answer you. Any commissioner have anything?
I'd just like to comment that it sure is good to hear that long-term healthcare facilities are going to be included in this first wave as soon as possible, because now we do have two staff and two residents at the King Nursing have tested positive. So it's going to be very important to get this most vulnerable population safe.
Hey, anybody else? All right. Ken Melvin, that's something he wants to go into here. And I, he has my permission. Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, rest of the board. At this time, I'd like Tom Shepherd and Lori Darga to sign into the meeting. You have something?
Yes.
There's Tom. There's Tom.
I'm here. Again, the echo. Oh, you're on over there.
There's Lori, they're under Heath's name. Okay.
On behalf of the, can you trigger talking? There. We're still getting it back. Okay, on behalf of the Veterans Affairs Committee, we would let, on the 25th of November, 2020, for Lori Dragga, Gregga, Gregga?
Darga.
Darga. Veteran Service Officer, dear Lori, we, the Roscommon County Veterans Affairs Committee, just wanted to make a, make a comment to express our appreciation to the wonderful job that you're doing at the Office of Roscommon County Veterans Affairs. It is, in your role as a county veteran service officer, you've demonstrated your ability to add value to everything that we are doing with your dedication, creativity, resourcefulness. Thank, thanks to your hard work, we've been able to do a better job serving our veterans and keeping up with the demands of the Roscommon County Veterans Affairs. Your contributions to the team are a reflection on your priorities as an individual and the importance that you place on doing a good job. You should know that we, the entire Roscommon County Veterans Affairs Committee, are grateful for everything that you have done in your role up to this point. We look forward to seeing what you will accomplish here in our Veterans Office in the future. With sincere regards, the Roscommon County Veterans Committee. So this is for you.
Thank you so much.
And we also have. We'd have to pop her on. We have a plaque for you from the committee for, for you, in appreciation for her dedication and commitment to the veterans and the Office of Roscommon County Veteran Services. So I'll hold that one up, so. There.
All right.
And then also. Because our county has been the example, as, as we feel, for the state of Michigan. Heath. As the Director of the Office of Veterans Affairs, we, the Roscommon County Veterans Affairs Committee, want to express our appreciation for your professional as well as personal performance of your duties as the Director of Veterans Affairs for the veterans of Roscommon County. His continuing to serve veterans during county building shutdown, working off his personal phone and meeting veterans to get them vouchers for emergency assistance outside the building. That's from Ken Melvin. I would just like to make sure appreciation is shown to Heath for everything he does during work hours and after hours as well. I know several veterans he has spoke with and helped with information outside the office hours this year and shouldn't go unrecognized. Ray Foster. As committee chairman, Heath always has our meeting documents prepared, making my job much easier. His consistent review of office budget makes sure our veterans have the resources they need for their needs, to include emergencies. Don Maras. I am proud to see that Heath has continued on with the legacy of our Office of Veterans Affairs being the role model for our county veteran service officers in Michigan. Heath's dedication to our veterans is respected by many county veteran service officers throughout Michigan. That's from me. Your contributions to the Veterans Affairs Office and the veterans of Roscommon County are a reflection of you still living the Army values. Loyalty, duty, respect, selfless service, honor, integrity, personal courage. You should know that we, the Roscommon Veterans Affairs Committee, are grateful for everything that you've accomplished as your role as Director of Veterans Affairs. With their sincere regards to committee.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Tom. Thank you.
And here's, we have also a plaque for Heath. And it reads, "An appreciation for your contributions and support of the Roscommon County Veterans Affairs Office. Keeping our Veterans Office as the role model for the county veteran services in Michigan."
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
That is so awesome.
It's a great honor.
I got choked up, I'm sorry.
I got choked up.
Back to you, Mr. Commissioners.
Ken, anything else to add to that, please?
No, I, I think Tom did an excellent job there. He surprised Heath very, very well.
Yeah.
I think Lori got surprised a little bit, and I think Heath got surprised a lot.
Yeah.
So that's good. Nice job, Ken and Tom. I appreciate it. It went very good. I think that's our first presentation on Zoom. I think it went excellent.
Yes.
Okay, also under public comment, because we do have some public out there, is there any public comment from anybody, please, at this time?
I'm gonna get out of there.
Okay, hearing none. On to number six, Administrator Controller Report.
Well, good morning.
Good morning again.
So just to kind of get you started, we are down to just the last three now lawsuit updates for us. The jail death that is still kind of in that fact-finding area. The opiate lawsuits class action, which if you walk into my office, I have four 12-inch stacks of paperwork that has been filed by the pharmaceutical companies that were named in the suit, as they are all filing for bankruptcy at this point. And then we're just still kind of waiting, in that waiting pattern for Cho versus Roscommon County, where it is at the Supreme Court level. There has been no action at this point to date. I did receive some good news. We are looking right now at Priority Health in response to the COVID crisis, offering a premium credit to large, fully funded employers, which is us, on our February 2021 invoice. I do not have the total dollar amount yet of what that will be. It's going to be used on the analysis of our claims experience. And obviously, the lower our utilization, the higher percent of credit we'll get, but it could be anywhere from 5% to 35% of $190,000. So let's hope our utilization was low for the last year. We did have pretty good numbers when we renewed. So I'm thinking we might be more at like the 20% mark, which would be just, just a really nice bonus to, to offer. So I will remind you that during the actual Stay Safe, Say Home order, we did have two free months from Delta Dental where they didn't charge us at all. So I'm, I'm pretty impressed with who we have chosen as our providers at this point. I have managed to complete the totality of the cost allocation plans based on the 2019 budget. And those charges have been sent out to the variations of departments. Additionally, I completed the workers' compensation audit allocation to each department as well. I also have completed our county incentive program annually by December 1st. We have to do four, four major reports for the state of Michigan, publish them on the website and submit them to the, to the state if we would like to get 100% of our funding, and that's been completed as well. That was turned in yesterday and is up on the website on the controller link page for anyone who is interested in reviewing it. Our IT department, we just had a conversation last week between the chairman, vice chairman, myself and our board secretary. And we were discussing how we do have residents that occasionally will request to know variations of information about our lake level control structures. In speaking with our IT department, they were able to work with our web designer and have created a new category on our website where users can register to receive notification for lake level updates. So simply if someone to request, hey, I would like to know when boards are removed or gates are opened or closed. They can go online, they can go to that website notification category and register to receive that lake level updates. So that's something new, and I really appreciate Phil getting to that so fast for me. We. regarding the administration of the Michigan Small Business Restart Program. This is the one that Brenda worked with through, throughout the July and August months. At Seago County, their economic alliance is the administrator of the funds. Brenda and I need to sit down and figure out exactly what this will look like. This is going to be a separate fund, so it won't fall under economic development. It is a grant specific to wages to administer this Michigan Small Business Restart Program. So as soon as we get the manual and more information, Brenda and I, well, we're going to have the money before we know what we're supposed to do with it, essentially is what happens. So we'll stash it away and I will keep you updated on, on how that will work out to pay Brenda maybe for additional time that she has to devote or time outside of her functions as serving us for economic development purposes. We have received our funding for the Northern Michigan Regional Hybrid DWI Drug Treatment Court for the fiscal year 2021 through the Michigan Department and for our federal grants as well. A huge kudos to Terry Colini. It does take a lot of work. They require something different every time you submit or request for reimbursement, and she has been very diligent in, in making sure those things are happening. We do have three, three different larger HR position or HR issues coming up, issues. We do have the GIS position that I am currently developing a job description for. This will be something that needs to be trained for prior to our current IT slash mapping person's retirement. So once I get this job description developed in the next few weeks here, I will reach out to the Wage and Compensation Committee. They're tasked with reviewing that and placing it in the proper, proper level, essentially, as we did a couple of years ago, working with our coordinator at the time. We also determined that our lead gypsy moth position, Daniel, who was currently in that position and doing a, just an outstanding job for minimal, minimal direction. And that's kind of going, okay, here's what we need from you. Let's figure out how to make this work. He's just really stepped up to the tasks and is wanting to continue in that position. So I'm really grateful and excited for that because like I said, he just, he's, he's got a passion for the program and that's, that's wonderful. We will be advertising for a new Director of Maintenance position at the beginning of 2021. And additionally, we'll be looking at advertising for the Gypsy Moth Coordinator position as well. Little update on the Gypsy Moth Suppression Team. Commissioner, Commissioner Melvin had asked for some sort of a presentation because we don't have a formal coordinator at this point, and it's kind of been this all hands on desk where I've taken that kind of oversight position. I figured I'd give you a quick update. So our Gypsy Moth Suppression Team continues to work throughout the county. They have been, unless it's been high wind, they have been out there. They are, they're a small but wonderful crew. I know that Commissioner Melvin had a chance to meet a couple of them and was impressed. They have at this point achieved over 80% completion of the county. They are working now in those less populated areas, kind of going back, they start with the highly populated areas where you're going to get the biggest bang for your buck. And then are moving out to the lowline, less populated areas of, of each township. More than half of the townships are at 100% completion. Some of the ones, Markey Township and several of the smaller townships. So they are heading back out to, to double check and to review certain things. They are having no issues making plots this year, which shouldn't be a surprise to anybody based on what we saw last year with our own eyes. So certainly, we will have a large grouping of spray blocks. The, the data will be drawn and we'll, we'll look and see what we have. My guess will be that aside from the first and second years that Roscommon County put this into play, this will probably be the largest spray year that we will see, which is a good thing because that means the season after will be lower. I will tell you that the five people plus Daniel that we have on our Gypsy Moth crew this year, I have received emails and in-person comments, Facebook comments and telephone calls. People are just, they're very professional, very friendly, have been doing a great job of information. We had a couple, couple calls, three altogether, out of everybody they've surveyed so far, just looking for a little bit more identification on the vehicles. So we've come up with a few ideas to tackle that for next year. So we've gotten some good feedback, good feedback from that. And a lot of positive feedback and information from the public via the new kind of customer-oriented program that has been drafted out. So thank you to Commissioner Buckenthaler and to Chairman Schneider for serving in that leadership role for the committee. I do want to give you a quick update on the building. I'm sorry, this is a really lengthy report. It's been, it's been a long two weeks. There has been a continued upturn, like Michael said, in our COVID cases within the county. Obviously, that's resulted in more employee exposures. We don't have a high count of employees who have tested positive. We have a handful that are quarantined due to exposure from other people. To date, we only have two employees with reported cases, so that's, that's a good thing. But as you know, we have taken certain steps. We are only open to the public via appointment. So therefore, don't walk in and expect to walk down to the department as a member of the public, but please call ahead. Of course, we'd love everybody to use whatever services we have online via telephone, via email. The employees are all still working. However, we are trying to have as many people work virtual as possible in compliance with the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services Order. And other departments are staffed on a rotating basis, so that way, if one person were to become exposed, we wouldn't be exposing five people in the totality of the department. I know this can be a strain on our department heads and our elected officials, so I appreciate them working to keep, keep their departments safe and to keep their employees and themselves safe as well. Quick status update to, for the runway at the airport that needs to be cleared for the 20 to one ratio. Obviously, Mr. Jeroche was here and presented to the Board of Commissioners a plan of action. We were hoping to be able to move forward with that in order to start that process for the sales of land, swaps of lands with the state and the property owner involved. However, there seems to have been some concerns that the property owner, I'm going to call it a change of plans or mindset on his part, did speak to Mr. Jeroche about. I know Commissioner Milburn is going to be working with Mr. Jeroche in order to find an alternative solution. And at that point, it will be brought back to the Board of Commissioners. The biggest intent is that this is, this is fair and equitable for all citizens and there is a long-term perpetual solution for access and maintenance of the runway. I'm almost done. I do have to complete year-end reporting for the Eagle permits for Gypsy Moth. Essentially, that's just letting them know total acreage sprayed and the approximate, approximate of parcels that touched any water in the area of the three lakes. Jamie Howserman, our equalization director, already had a draft email letter for me to send out about a week and a half ago. Aside from just needing to schedule the Zoom meeting, we've got that ready to go by this afternoon. And I will copy all of the commissioners on that as well, so that you're aware of what they've received. We still have lots of COVID grant stuff happening. We have gotten money in for two of the state grants. Looking for reimbursement still on the hazardous pay, but we, we've been approved. It's just waiting for the reimbursement to show up. The one grant that we have through the CBGB grant, that money's going quickly now with our uptake in COVID. Obviously, we've got some additional COVID expenses, new PPE to be purchased and supplied, some remodels in some different departments to increase separation, safety and social distancing. And then the reinstatement of COVID screening at the front and tracking forms as well. Additionally, one of the things that I reached out to a couple different, less monetarily, people we don't continuously fund normally. The Coalition was one of them, and I asked them, I said, is there anything that we can do for you to help you, to help you, help our public with maybe some issues or problems that have come up? And the big thing that they have been looking for, funding for, was sleep sack purchases for the. for those parents that have lost their jobs and are having a harder time being able to maintain a safe environment for their infants and their, and their children. So we are putting $5,000 of that grant money to the purchase of sleep sacks for the Coalition. So good job, guys. I think that's a, that's a great thing for us to be able to help fund. Last two things I wanted to let you know, just a quick update on our medical examiner program and where we are to date. I just wanted you to know where I'm kind of an average year right now of what we would see budgetarily wise. We have had 80 total death scenes year-to-date investigated and of those 80, 29 have required transport for the purpose of autopsies to performed. So just to give you an idea of how many autopsies actually happen out of, out of a traditional medical examiner, and we do have a total of six unclaimed bodies so far this year. Another upturn, I, and I don't know, you know, not necessarily related to COVID, but again, you just have people that are isolated and it's hard to find family for. We have had a couple where it's come about where, you know, an aunt or a sister-in-law who wasn't necessarily the person that had a right to claim the body has come forward after everything has been processed and signed off. I am more than willing to let them have the body or the cremains that are left to be buried. Traditionally, I ask for 50% of the reimbursement for that, which is about $500 to go towards that cost. And again, I'll give kudos to veterans. They have been super, super great to work with when I do have a veteran to make sure that they are taken care of. Last but not least, on a very positive note, all of the employees that were eligible to participate in our sick time attendance incentive program that you approved have chosen to participate and have asked that I provide to the Board of Commissioners. A huge thank you for putting that together. They feel like they've been recognized for being diligent and responsible in their usage of those hours through that program. And I have heard from several department heads that they believe that this is going to help with some attendance issues as well, as other employees realize there, there's a bonus to not taking a full day off to a, for a dentist's appointment or for a doctor's appointment where you could just take a couple hours at the end of the day. So that's it.
Okay, that was quite lengthy, but very informative. Any questions from any commissioners at this time in regards to the Administrator Controller Report?
None.
Hearing none. Item seven, Correspondence, Roscommon County 2020 Apportment Report. That's been included, it's in your packet. That's from the Equalization Department. I think she did a very good job of explaining that at the work session. Any questions in regards to the Correspondence, item A? Hearing none. Monthly Department Report, Animal Control. I see DeeDee's on here. Do you wanna touch on that, DeeDee? You're muted, DeeDee.
There yet?
There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you now.
All right, yeah, we're, we're still pretty busy. Things haven't slowed down much for us. We are still open appointment only and doing curbside for selling licenses and any business that we can do curbside. We do the animal intake this month. We did help West Branch, Michigan State Police and Gladwin County with a large cruelty seizure. So we also took in some of those animals and have them here at the shelter. So right now, our animal intakes are up a little bit, but we try to help out the other counties when we can and they do the same for us when needed. So we have been quite busy, but all seems to be going well. So that's a good thing.
Okay. Tim, Chairman of Animal Control, anything to add to DeeDee's report?
Not at this time, but we do have another meeting on December 10th. We'll probably finalize stuff for the end of the year for you.
Okay, all right. Mr. Milburn, anything? You're the second person on that committee.
Good, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Next report with Gypsy Moth, Jody already touched on that, so I think we're good there. Number nine, any visitors that'd like to be recognized at this time, please? Don't hesitate to jump in. All right. Hearing none. Item 10, Unfinished New Business. We did put in the Designated Assessor Agreement. We did discuss that at the work session quite extensively and we're looking at a December 1st Zoom meeting. Do we have a time on that, any chance, Jamie or Jody? Apparently not, so we'll be getting caught up on that. Anything, anybody else have anything as far as designated assessor? Okay. Item 10, Michelle, are you ready to go on motions and resolutions?
Sure.
Okay. Here we go. Motion number one, please.
Move to adopt the revised L-4402 Statement Showing Taxable Evaluations and Mills Appportioned by the County Board of Commissioners for the Year 2020 and authorize Jamie Howserman, Equalization Director, to sign the L-4402, thereby authorizing and directing the various assessing officers to spread the rates against the taxable valuation for 2020.
Go move.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Motion made by Mr. Russo, seconded by Mr. Milburn to adopt the revised L-4402 Statement Showing Taxable Evaluations and Mills Appportioned, proportioned by the County Board of Commissioners for the Year 2020. Any further discussion from any commissioner at this time? Hearing none, roll call.
McInnes.
Yes.
Melvin.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion carried, thank you. Motion number two, please.
Move to approve the Police Officers Association of Michigan, Roscommon County Sheriff's Office, 2021 through 2025 Contract Agreement as recommended by the Personnel Labor Relations Committee. 8% Raise Over Five-Year Contract Distributed As 3%, 2%, 1%, 1%, 1%. Change in Marines, Snowmobile, ORV Officers' Wage to a Three-Tier Wage Starting at $13.60. Increase in Fitness Incentive From Once Annually to Twice Annually. Inclusion of Paid Medical Leave, 40 Hours. Inclusion of Dry Cleaning Services for Corrections Officers. Inclusion of Sick Time Incentive Program. No Change in Health, Dental or Vision Insurances. No Change in MERS. Increase in allowable Mileage for Patrol Cars From 120,000 to 130,000 Miles. Removal of Language Stipulating That Retiree Medical Is Only Eligible to Those Who Retire Within 90 Days of Eligibility of Retirement. Clarification on Language Regarding Paid Military Drills. Change to Overtime Pay Language to Reflect Historical Practice.
Looking for a motion in a second, please.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that. Motion made by Mr. McInnes, seconded by Mr. Snyder to approve the Police Officers Association, Roscommon County Sheriff's Office Contract Agreement from 2021 to 2025, being five years. Any further discussion, please?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I, I applaud the work that's been done by the Personnel and Labor Relations Committee on this contract. My vote on this does not reflect any, any disagreement other than just, I, if, if I voted yes, I, I would be compromising myself in that I think, just my personal opinion, whether it can be, could have been accomplished by the Labor Relations Committee or not, my personal opinion that the frontline officers in correction and road patrol, in my opinion, deserve more pay.
Okay, any other comment, any commissioner at this time? Hearing none, roll call.
Russo.
Yes.
Melvin.
No.
Schneider.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
McInnes.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay. Motion number three, please.
Move to approve the Police Officers Association of Michigan, Roscommon County, E911, 2021 through 2025 Contract Agreement as recommended by the Personnel Labor Relations Committee. 8% Raise Over Five-Year Contract Distributed As 3%, 2%, 1%, 1%, 1%. Inclusion of Paid Medical Leave, 40 Hours. Inclusion of Sick Time Incentive Program. No Change in Health, Dental or Vision Insurances.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
Motion made by Mr. Melvin, seconded by Mr. McInnes to approve the Police Officers Association of Michigan, Roscommon County, E91, 2021 through 2025 Contract Agreement. Any further discussion, please? Hearing none, roll call.
Milburn.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
McInnes.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion four, please.
Move to approve the Command Association of Michigan, Roscommon County, 21, 2025 Contract Agreement as recommended by the Personnel Labor Relations Committee with the following changes. 8% Raise Over Five-Year Contract Distributed As 3%, 2%, 1%, 1%, 1%. Increase in Fitness Incentive From Once Annually to Twice Annually. Inclusion of Paid Medical Leave, 40 Hours. Inclusion of Sick Time Incentive Program. No Change in Health, Dental or Vision Insurances. No Change in MERS. Increase in allowable Mileage for Patrol Cars From 120,000 to 130,000 Miles. Removal of Language Stipulating That Retiree Medical Is Only Eligible to Those Who Retire Within 90 Days of Eligibility of Retirement. Clarification on Languages Regarding Paid for Military Drills. Increase in Shift Differential for Sargents From $0.50 to $1 per Hour.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Mr. Melvin, seconded by Mr. Russo to approve the Command Association of Michigan's Contract from 2021 through 2025. Any further discussion from any commissioner at this time? Hearing none, roll call.
McInnes.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Melvin.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, motion number five. Before we go to that, how much of that needs to be read, the whole thing or that's a lot?
Well, I'm planning to read it except for the chart that lists each fund.
Okay, so the first full page and then that, the next two, and then are you planning to go to the board for the resolves?
How about I just go?
You know what? That sounds like a plan. Go ahead, Michelle.
All right. Move to adopt the County of Roscommon 2021 Fiscal Year General Appropriations Act, approving the 2021 General and Special Funds Budget. County of Roscommon 2021 Fiscal Year General Appropriations Act. A resolution appropriating monies and adopting the 2021 Roscommon County Budget, including the General Fund Operating, County Road Commission Fund, Special Road Milage Fund, E911 Fund, Sheriff Road Patrol Fund, Animal Control Donations Fund, Animal Shelter Program Fund, Specialty Hybrid Court Fund, Friend of the Court Fund, Counseling Fund, Landfill Remediation Fund, Automation Fund, Indigent Defense Fund, Concealed Pistol Licensing Fund, Correction Training Fund, Welfare Fund, Law Library Fund, County Housing Program Income Funds, County Housing Escrow Fund, County Housing Administration Fund, Juvenile Justice Fund, Commission on Aging Fund, Childcare Fund, Veterans Affairs Fund, Gypsy Moth Fund, Juvenile Detention Fund, Inmate Commissary Fund and Airport Fund. It being the finding and opinion of the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners, the Committee of the whole has had under consideration the taxes for the local units of government and the needs of various county departments budgetary units. Public hearings on the budget pursuant to MCLA 141.412 was held on November 10th, 2020 and notice of a public hearing on the proposed budget was published in a newspaper of general circulation on November 10th, 2020 and posted on RoscommonCounty.net. The Committee of the whole, after considerable deliberation, has recommended adoption of the budgets and reports attached and made part of this Appropriations Act. The Roscommon County Board of Commissioners acknowledges that in adoption of the budget, Ad Valorem Milage will be levied against the county's taxable valuation. The purpose and amount of the milages are: General Fund 3.5804, E911.9993, Road Patrol 1.4989, Senior Services .9993, Gypsy Moth .1250, Animal Shelter .2498, Animal Control Program .1500, Veterans Affairs .1670, Special Road Milage .5000, for a total, total maximum allowable milage levy of 8.2697. No obligation shall be incurred against and no payment shall be made from any appropriation account unless there is a sufficient and unencumbered balance in the appropriation and sufficient funds are or will be available to meet the obligation. The Roscommon County Board of Commissioners hereby resolves to adopt the attached 2021 General Fund Operating and Other Special Revenue Funds and appropriate monies from various county revenues and equity reserves to authorize expenditures in accordance with the account group detail of the various funds. Estimated revenues and estimated expenditures for fiscal year 2021 shall be, see the chart. The Board further resolves that an appropriation is not a mandate to spend, but shall limit the amount that may be spent for such purposes as are defined by the Board of Commissioners and that shall be limited to the 2021 calendar year. All special revenue and enterprise fund balances at year-end are to be considered the initial allotment under the budgetary appropriation for the new fiscal year. The fund balance determination will be based on the most appropriate basis of accounting, cash modified or full accrual. If a budgetary unit contends that part of its fund balance is either obligated or otherwise restricted from being considered as an initial allotment of county monies under the new appropriation, it will be incumbent upon that unit to demonstrate the obligation or restriction to the satisfaction of the County Board of Commissioners. The Board further resolves that no county department, agency, board, commission or unit whatsoever shall be authorized to expend funds from its general fund appropriation until it has submitted to the Board of Commissioners a budget detailing the planned expenditure of funds in accordance with appropriations contained herein. Said budget shall be submitted to the Office of the Controller on or before September 30th, 2020. Said budget shall be a form as shall be specified by the County Controller. Any county budget, agency, board, commission or unit whatsoever and any organization, public or private, which accepts a county appropriation, shall do so subject to an agreement that provides for inspection and/or audit by the Roscommon County Board or the County Controller it's designee. The Board or the County Controller it's designee shall have access for the purpose of audit and examination to any and all books, documents, papers and records of the recipient organization. The Board further resolves that the budget may be amended as conditions indicate, provided the budget remains in a balanced state and further authorizes the County Controller to make certain budget transfers in accordance with the Board's budget transfer policy and directs the County Controller to make periodic adjustments to salary, wage and fringe benefit line items to affect the transfer of any funds in these accounts resulting from attrition, delay in hiring or other personnel actions to the contingency accounts. The Board further resolves failure to properly amend budgets may lead to unpaid vouchers at year-end if the, its total budget would be exceeded. The report for the final quarter, October through December, will be prepared and submitted by December 30th, 2021. Any obligation incurred or payment authorized in violation of this resolution shall be void and shall subject any responsible officials or employees to disciplinary action as outlined in Public Act 621 of 1978 and the County of Roscommon Personnel Manual. The Board further resolves that in administration of the adopted budget, budgetary control shall reside at the most detailed level of budget adoption by the Board, i.e. department, program or activity. Budgetary unit administrators may exercise their discretion to make unlimited transfers among light items without prior approval within the supplies and other services and charges account groups with written notice and permission of the Controller. Therefore, be it resolved that the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners adopts the proposed 2021 budget as the final fiscal year 2021. as the final fiscal year 2021 budget for the County of Roscommon. The 2021 fiscal year budget is adopted by reference with revenues and activity expenditures as indicated in this act.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Michelle. I'll second that.
Motion is made by Mr. Milburn, seconded by Mr. Russo to adopt the County of Roscommon, 2021 Fiscal Year General Fund Appropriations Act, approving the 2021 General and Special Funds Budget. Any further discussion from any commissioner at this time? Hearing none. Roll call.
Melvin.
Yes.
Muckenthaler.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Resolution adopted.
Okay. Thank you. Motion passes. Thank you, Michelle, for doing a really good job of reading that motion. It was quite lengthy. I also want to thank our Controller, who did a bang-up job on getting this thing ready for us and Personnel and Budget. Jody kept us informed the whole way. I think it went pretty seamless this year. Thank you very much. So with that, on to committee reports. Going across the top of my screen here, Commissioner Muckenthaler.
Yes, on the 18th, we had a Zoom meeting with the Collaborative Board. And that's it.
And that's it, okay. All right. Commissioner Milburn.
C.O.A. District Health. N.M.C.A.A. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Mr. Russo.
Nothing to report at this particular meeting.
Okay, Commissioner Melvin.
Yes, I worked on the agenda meeting with the Chairman, Michelle and Jody on Thursday, I think it was. And then also on Friday, the, all the gates at the Higgins Lake Level Control Structure were closed. This is one of the rare years where the winter level is very close to being achieved until we had this most recent precipitation. Just as a note to the, or a reminder to the rest of the Board, the normal condition for the lake level control structure from November through the springtime is all gates open. So this is a, a kind of an exception to what normally happens. I expect that the gates will be open again shortly and will remain open for the rest of the winter. That's it, Bob.
Okay. As far as my report, on the 13th, we had an EDC 10 o'clock Zoom meeting in regards to some discussion on whether the EDC Board is a committee or a corporation. It was Mr. Milburn and my, and my desire that they stay a committee at this point, so.
And I also was on that meeting. I didn't know if that was a, one report on that one, Mr. Chair.
All right, so that was done via Zoom. On the 17th, MSU Extension Advisory Board Meeting, which was a Zoom meeting. Health Department was a Zoom meeting also. Far as the Health Department, you know, Mike Beatty did say, you know, we went up to 457 reported cases. That was an increase of 14 in one day. The Health Department basically, been looking at the Health Department from all, from all the statewide health departments. Our, our numbers are actually very low. But they are increasing, so it has, is everybody else's, so. They are starting to experience some burnout with people down there. So we're doing, I did see on TV last night that District Department Number 10 is not doing any contact tracing anymore because they're just too busy. So I don't know if that will happen to our Central Michigan or not. Then the agenda meeting was last week at 10 o'clock. The EDC meeting, which was scheduled at 8 o'clock, was canceled till December 10th, so that'll be, be held then. I did have some I had a discussion with Michelle Stevenson yesterday in regards to board rules for next year. And Michelle is going to take a look at our board rules. There's some outdated things in our board rules. She's going to read them over, highlight them and bring them to our organizational meeting so that we can make those corrections, okay? In regards to lake levels, I just wanted to add that I think it's a great, it was, Ken and I both agreed that as far as lake levels, we need to put that site online because it's not up to the commissioners or up to the Executive Secretary to inform people when their, when the gates are open and when they're closed. They can go to the website and take a look at it and that should be enough sufficiently to tell them that because otherwise you're going to have everybody, your brother, trying to be notified. So I felt it was a proper thing to do. I do want to thank IT for getting on top of that. And then lastly, or not lastly, I do want to thank all the commissioners for the discussion we had in the work session. I appreciated that and especially in regards to Designated Assessor. And Sheriff, I didn't talk to you ahead of time, but have you got anything to add, sir?
Sheriff texted me and said if he didn't answer, it was because he had a meeting that he had to attend at 11 o'clock on Zoom. And I'm guessing it's 11:04 and he's in his other meeting. So he apologized.
That, that is not a problem. He's still showing up on my screen, so that's fine. I have no problem with that. Anything else? Anybody else have anything on a committee report, please? Okay, item 13, any public comment at this time, please?
Chairman Snyder, this is Michelle. Can I comment?
Yes, you may.
Okay, thank you. Regarding the committees, I was thinking about it this morning and one of the things I know in previous conversations that have been had, maybe it would be a good idea at some point for the commissioners to actually take a look and evaluate the effectiveness of the committees and those that are appointed because yes, we have individuals who serve on these committees and some do great jobs and show up to all of the meetings. And we have some individuals who maybe aren't there or maybe they don't contribute as much. But I know that there's been conversation before, comments before, where there are some committees that aren't really owning up to what you, what your expectations are of them. So I, I really think that the commissioners need to evaluate those appointments and actually, you know, make sure that those committees are serving the county and the residents to the best of their ability because they do, you know, agree to do this. They do take oaths. Many of them take oaths to uphold the Constitution. So we, I just want to make sure that that's being done. That's all I had.
Okay. Any commissioners have anything else to add in regards to Michelle's comments at all? Okay, any other public comment out there, please? Okay, hearing none. Item 14, adjournment.
No move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
All right, and I'm planning on seeing everybody on December 9th. I don't know if we will be under the pause or not by then, but maybe we can use our technology in our meeting room, which I'd love to, but we'll, you know, stay tuned and we'll go from there, all right?
What time, Mr. Chair, do you want to meet?
What's that?
What time, Mr. Chair?
That's a regular meeting.
That's a regular meeting day.
I kept thinking for the Zoom. Okay, I understand.
It'll, it'll either be Zoom or we'll use our technology and however it works also. Stay tuned, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, all those in favor of a German, sing goodbye by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
Yep, thank you.